Natrona County School District Board of Trustees Candidate Forums. This event is presented by the Natrona County Library and the Casper League of Women Voters. We're glad to see you all here tonight, and we hope that you'll join us again this Monday, October 7th, at 7 o'clock, when we'll host the Senior Citizen District Board Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank Joanne True and Beth Worthing for volunteering to moderate our forums for us this year. I'd also like to thank all of the candidates for being here tonight to give the community an opportunity to learn more about you. If you have any questions for the candidates, please fill out a note card at the back of the room, and then give it to our league volunteer Jim, and he'll run it up to the moderators, who will try to fit those questions in. We will be abiding by the library's Code of Conduct policy tonight. If you'd like to see the policy, it is just posted on the back wall. I'll now turn it over to Beth and Joanne, who will explain how the forum will run in more detail tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome, candidates. I'm Beth Worthing, and this is Joanne True, and thank you so much for taking the time to be with us tonight. We really appreciate the engagement that you have in the decisions that really matter for the students and staff in the Natrona County School District, so thank you. The way that Joanne and I are running this is that we have some questions that have already been prepared by the League of Women Voters and by both Joanne and myself. We also have the questions that have already come in from the audience. We are going to rotate candidates between long-form questions and short-form questions, just to mix it up. Joanne and I are crazy that way. And so those long-form questions are, you will have a minute response, and then the short-form questions, we really try to just keep those as short as possible, like to a sentence or so, and our librarians are going to be the ones who edit your, is this a perfect sentence or not? No, I'm kidding. It is meant to be short-form, just one sentence, yes or no, and here's why type question. We are going to start at the left with candidate Howie, and work our way down. You have your microphones, and so this half of the table will have that, and then this half of the table will have that microphone. Then, for, you'll get your turn, candidate Bolender. And then, that second question will go to candidate Mahoney, et cetera. Any questions? Okay, well then, we're going to get started, and Joanne's going to ask the first question.
Do you need to hold the microphone?
I forgot the most important part. Betsy here is going to be timing the candidates, and so when it is, when you have half of your time remaining, she'll hold up a yellow card. It's not like a soccer thing. When your time is up, she'll hold up the red card, and we would ask that you would then stop talking at that point, and we'll use our mom voices if we have to. I bet we won't have to though tonight.
Looks like we're having an issue with the... Okay, are we ready? Ready? Okay, this first question is for candidate Howie. And actually, it's not the first question, it's the minute and a half introduction. So each and every candidate will have one and a half minutes on whatever you'd like to talk about for your introduction. So please share who you are and what motivates you to run for Natrona County School Board.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name's Dana Howie. I am a Casper native, and I'm also a product of the NCSD public school system. Born and raised here, went through the system, graduated from the University of Wyoming. My husband and I both did, and his first teaching job was in Nebraska, so we were gone for six years, and that's all. Then we were back. So by the time I got back here, my husband started teaching first, and then I was the next year, and we were both at Kelly Walsh. We were both CTE teachers, so that's probably the most fun you'll ever find, because the kids have a lot of hands-on, and it's really, they seem to enjoy it an awful lot. I taught for 28 years, then I retired. Then I didn't like being retired all that much, and so I decided to run for the board. So I've been on the board for 12 years, and there are still some things I'd like to work on, so that's why I'm here.
Well, good evening. I just wanted to thank the people who arranged this tonight and all of the folks out in the audience. This was really a great turnout. My name is Elizabeth Mahoney, and I too am a Casper native. I was born and raised here. My parents, both mother and father, graduated from Natrona County High School, as did my sisters and brothers, and now I have grandchildren attending the public schools here in Casper. And I, in terms of my reasons for stepping up to run for the board, this district, you don't realize it at the time, but it provided me so much, and not only me, but two generations and a third one coming up, and I have a deep sense of gratitude and have a desire to serve the district. In terms of my, some personal information, I am married, I have five children, four grandchildren, and it looks like there's some grandparents out there. They are the love of my life. Things I like to do, running, cycling, competing in triathlons, so a lot of swimming, and really just being outdoors, enjoying the Wyoming way of life. In terms of experience, I served on the school board in Hot Springs County for 12 years, and nine of those years I served as the chairman. And what I learned from that experience was very humbling. I thought I went in and knew a whole lot, but I didn't know much at all. But also, when decisions are made and the student is put at the center of the decisions, it's very, very difficult to make the wrong decision. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Taya True Wells. First, I'd like to say thank you to our hosts, the people in attendance, and the people online. Our public schools are important. They are important, and they matter. They matter for our community's vitality, they are important for our employer's future workforce, and they are really important to our families and their kids and those futures. I am running for school board because I want to help it focus on things that matter, things that move the needle, move the system and our kids' education to make it better. There's a lot that the district does well, and hopefully tonight, we can talk about some of those things. I have five areas of interests that I would like to work on should I be elected. I hope I can talk about those things as well. A bit about my background. I am a product of NCSD, Crest Hill, Dean Morgan, NC. I am a teacher by training. I have taught, coached, volunteered, or had my kids in the following: inner-city schools, suburban schools, rural schools. I have had them in public traditional schools, public alternative schools, and private schools. The alternative schools are Montessori, Waldorf, dual-language immersion, schools without walls, and a night high school. I also taught at Kelly Walsh and out in Oregon. I helped to bring dual-language immersion to Natrona County School Board, or to the school district. I was a member of Governor Gordon's Ride Initiative that looked at, oh! And there's more. I look forward to tonight's discussion.
Hello, my name is Renee Redding. I am currently running for school board because I think the school board needs a lot of change. I have three kids in the district right now, and as a parent, when you see your kids go through this school district, you start to notice some things, and then you want to get involved, and I think this is how the community needs to get involved. I want to focus a lot on parental rights. I think parents are the first and foremost educators of our children, so I want to get parents involved in a lot of what happens in this school district. As far as what qualifies me to run is that I'm a citizen of Natrona County. You don't need to have an educational background to run for a public office. So I think that the community needs to be involved, and I am here to get involved and help our kids and help our community as much as I can. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Albert Hall, and I am not a Casper native. We moved here from California three years ago after a stint in Colorado for 10 years. I also am focusing on parental rights, but also on academics in the schools with the, with an emphasis on intervention in the early grades, so the kids are not behind in second and third grades, and then they need to somehow try to catch up, which is very difficult to do. I taught for 10 years in a, it was in a private school down in Colorado, Rocky Ford, and so I dealt with a lot of other kids. I have a lot of experience also in one of the things with foster children. We had two adopted children, and I also was a court-appointed special advocate, so I worked with a high school boy, and also with the Sunrise Center, which was families, parents and kids who were having a great deal of difficulty. I really hope to make changes. I was not intending to run, but I am running now, and I am here, and it's a pleasure to be here before you today. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Bolender, and nice to see you all here today. I'm impressed with the turnout. I am a former teacher, I was backup. I was born in Cody, lived in, grew up in Cody and Powell, and when I was in seventh grade, I moved to Casper and went to CY Junior High. Little background, and then I went to NCHS, graduated, and had a number of different jobs, but I was working in the oil patch. And my wife was, had become a teacher, and she wanted to, she would come home every night, and I would listen to her, and she would talk about how wonderful her job was and her students and colleagues. Anyway, I had, I decided, okay, I want to be a teacher too. And I did. I got a bachelor's degree, I got a master's degree. I have two children that both graduated from Kelly Walsh, and then I have a grandchild who just started kindergarten, and another one that's going to be there soon. So I have a lot of passion for our district and our schools, so. And I want to, I want to see the kids again. I miss my kids.
Good evening. I'm Debbie McCullar. Thanks for hosting us tonight, library and League of Women Voters, and thank you for those of you that are here. I have a six-plus-year-decade relationship with Natrona County School District. As a student, as a parent, as a teacher, 37 years in the classroom. I have two children and 6,000 bonus kids that went through my classroom, and what an honor it is to see Taya up here and running with her this year. I served on the board for eight years and was not re-elected the last time. I'm back, and I'm back because I had not finished some objectives that were important to me, and as I've noticed in today's paper, important also to the governor and the superintendent of education. My number-one priority in running for the board is to eliminate cell phones from our schools. I believe that that will take care of the greatest part of our distractions. And I have other items that I think will bring our kids closer to having an environment where they can learn, where they will concentrate, where we might see some merit scholars again because we can increase rigor. We were set back by COVID, and we continue to allow our kids.
Good evening, my name is Alex Petrino. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I was raised in Casper. I went to Kelly Walsh, and I went to the University of Wyoming for my bachelor's and my master's degrees. I'm a licensed professional counselor. I'm actively and independently licensed in three states. While my background is not in K-12 education, I have taught college freshmen, and I also currently teach graduate students at the University of Wyoming. After a long stint away from Wyoming, moved back in 2021. I have, now have two children in the district. I have a third grader at Woods Learning Center, and I have a classic kindergartner at South Ridge. And I also cheer for the Mustangs on Friday night, as my husband is a volunteer coach there. I'm running for the Board of Trustees because I believe in public education. I enjoyed my education here. I had a great experience, and I feel like it did set me up for the future, and I love to see everything that has flourished even since I have been out of school. Some of my priorities are the mental health and well-being of all of our students in the district, and prioritizing all, every single one of our students, not just certain groups of students, and wanting to make sure the needs of our teachers are being addressed. I want to make sure we are supporting our teachers and trusting our teachers and giving them the resources they need to be successful. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cheyenne Houston, and I want to thank everybody for being here this evening. I'm a small-business owner and a 21-year veteran of the United States Air Force. I was born and raised next door in the next state, South Dakota, western South Dakota. I've lived in Chey, or in Wyoming now for 24 years, spent 12 years down in Cheyenne as a full-time member of the Wyoming Air National Guard, and I've lived in Casper since 2012. My husband and I live on the property that he grew up on. I'm running for school board because I believe it's time to focus back on education and to provide our students with the knowledge and the skills necessary to be successful after graduation. We also must restore trust between the public school system, parents, and the community through sound fiscal decisions and transparencies. Thank you.
My name is Kyla Alvey, and I'm actually a current trustee right now on the board. I am seeking reelection. I have had a lot of funding on the board this last four years, and I am seeking to continue the progress that we are working on. I think the candidates tonight have said some wonderful things. The interaction between students, the positivity that we see that happens in the schools with the teachers. There's a lot of great things happening within our district, and I would love to be able to continue to convey that to the residents. Public education is amazing and beautiful, and we are extremely lucky here in Natrona County for what we have and the amazing people that we have that show up every day for the students in the classroom. So, thanks.
My name is Sarah Bieber. I was born and raised here in Casper. I graduated from Natrona County High School. I have been actively involved in the school district for about eight years, more so in the last four years. I have two children, and I'm married to a 20-year military veteran. I am running for school board because I believe parents deserve a strong voice in their children's education. I want to support that voice for those parents, and I want to be that representation for them. I also want to focus back on actual academic education, getting away from personal agendas or any of the other, any other things that we've been seeing lately in our school district. I also believe that fiscal responsibility, accountability, and transparency is very important for our school district. We need to count those pennies. Things are getting tight for everybody, including the school district, and to continue to benefit our students, we need to make sure that we appropriate that money so that our students don't fall through the cracks.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to do a long-form question, and we're going to start with candidate Mahoney. Our question is, oh, so you have one minute, that's right. One minute, that's right. Okay, our question is, well, it's two questions. How would you describe the duties of the NCSD Board of Trustees? And what do you think is the most important duty of a trustee?
Sure, that's a great question. So the duties of the Board of Trustees, there are two things. It's policy, and it is hiring and evaluating the superintendent. Through policy, our duty or our job is to ensure that there are adequate resources to provide to the students, the teachers, and the administration to educate the students and help the students achieve their utmost ability.
Thank you. I see three with a three plus here. The first one is to hire the superintendent, definitely. Two, policy. So our teachers have guidelines, our staff have guidelines. Three, we need to discuss, approve, and then implement the budget. And then the three plus is whatever the community brings to our attention that we believe is worthy of a high-level academic-intellectual discussion.
So like the previous two, we all know that the school board is involved with hiring the superintendent, which, mind you, has not been evaluated within the last eight years, so that needs to be taken care of. Evaluation needs to happen with our superintendent. And then, of course, policy. Policies do need to, well, the board is in charge of writing all the policy that the teachers and the administration need to follow. So there are some policies that the Board of Trustees do need to review and go over.
Again, I agree with what they said there, but another thing I think of is that the school board also has a responsibility to advocate for the community and for the students. We need to be their voice to the other people on the school board, or we need to be able to talk to them, have open lines of communication with them. Of course, we have to follow the policies, we have to follow things that are set forth, but within that, we need to make sure that we listen to the parents.
I forgot to mention in my opening that I have been a teacher for 26 years in Natrona County, so I want to make sure you know that. We have a lot of responsibilities for the board, and budget is one of them. Just annual budget is something that has to be done, approving policies. I really agree with some of what's been said in terms of being able to interact with parents and teachers and students and staff. You know, it's one thing to be on a board and just go to those meetings, but if you don't get out into the district, you're missing out on the needs.
So one thing that hasn't been mentioned that we are in charge of is curriculum. And I've been listening to a couple who think that we need to get back to academics, but I'd like to say that we haven't left academics. They are alive and well, and teachers are working their butts off. One of the things that I think we need to do is concentrate more on the whole child so that it's academics as well as their mental, social, and emotional behavior, because they're in as bad a shape as the rest of our community.
The duties of the board, as many have already stated, is to govern, to pass the budget, to create and look at all policies, and to make sure we are communicating with all the stakeholders in our communities. And that does include parents, but that includes anyone who has a vested interest in what is happening in the school district. As an individual trustee, it's our responsibility to collaborate, to listen to each other, to listen to the stakeholders, and to come together and decide on what is going to be best for our district, including students, teachers, and staff.
Along with what everybody else before me has said, I also believe that an important aspect of the school board is to be a liaison between the public school system and also, you know, the community, parents, and other stakeholders. And another thing I think is important for the school board trustees is that we be an advocate at the state level to make sure that we are getting the resources that we need to be able to provide all the services that are expected. And that, you know, that means going down to Cheyenne, sitting in on those meetings, testifying, and to make sure that we are getting the resources that we need, and to be an outspoken advocate for our local control of our schools.
Well, I think it has been wonderfully stated. I'm going to add a couple of things. As a school board member, I think it's important that we be learners, that we be present and participate. We have collective ownership. I also wrote down here I have the five D's. We are to define, to dig, to distill, to discover, and to decide as a board member.
Policy, to me, is one of the biggest roles that the school board plays, not only making policy, writing policy, but enforcing policy. We can write policy all day, but if there isn't, there isn't a way to enforce it, or there is no follow-through, and if it's being enforced, there's no consequences, there's no feedback, there's no closed-loop communication on what's going on with those policies to know if they're effective. So policy is definitely number one, and the superintendent. The superintendent is actually the only one that's underneath the board, and I think that it's very important that we work with our superintendents, that we do evaluate them, that we do understand where they're at and where they're taking our district, because they are a partner in leadership of our district.
Candidate Howie, please, hasn't responded.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
So many good things have been said. I think that as a school board trustee, well, the trustees are responsible for everything that's been said, but one thing I think is very important is for them to listen, to respond if you can, to communicate with whoever needs to talk to you. You need to be a problem solver, and you need to be an advocate for all of the kids in public education. And one of the biggest things, I think, is to be able to work together whenever we're working on anything as a board, because you're only one trustee out of nine. So we need to have a lot of productive discussions. And as far as evaluating the superintendent, she hasn't been here too long, so I'm not too worried yet.
Thank you. So this next question is for candidate True Wells. We have had a suggestion that for the audience in the back row, please ask candidates to state their names before answering, just so that they can't see your names, and so it probably will help with online as well. So if you would try to do that. This next question is going to be a short answer, so I think, as we said, try to sum it up in one question, or in one sentence or less, and we'll let the librarians determine if it's one sentence or less. But we will cut you off, we will cut you off at 30 seconds. So we'll start with candidate True Wells. The superintendent of public instruction, a governor just released a letter regarding the need to enforce, modify use of cell phones in classrooms. What are your thoughts on this topic?
Agree.
I absolutely agree. I know with a teenage daughter, cell phones can get in the way, so I do think that that needs to be reined in.
Hi, I'm Albert Hall, and I also believe that cellphone usage in schools should be not allowed.
John Bolender, I agree with that. It's a real problem that teachers have to deal with, and it's become more of a problem with smartphones that give a lot of information to kids.
I do agree. In fact, that's my number-one priority in running for the board. I believe we need to go further than limiting their use. I believe they need to be banned.
Alex Petrino, and I agree.
Cheyenne Houston, and I absolutely agree with eliminating the cell phones in the classrooms.
Kyla Alvey, and I'll say hallelujah. I agree.
Sarah Bieber. I agree, but I don't think that it's just cell phones. I think that there's a lot of technology in the classroom. As a nurse, type-one diabetic students need cell phones because there are certain programs on there that they need to correlate with their devices, and their parents can see those things and navigation of that. There are reasons that students need access to cell phones. I'm not for them for personal use in the classroom.
Could we pass that microphone down to candidate Howie?
Dana Howie, and I agree that cell phones are a problem. I also agree that there are a few instances where they could be needed in certain circumstances, but for the most part, I'd be really happy to see them disappear.
Elizabeth Mahoney, and I too agree. I think earlier tonight, we mentioned focus on academics and education, and cell phones are often a distraction.
Okay, thank you. So this next question, or I would say topic, is for candidate Redding to start with. This is another long-form question, and of the questions that so far have been submitted by the audience, this topic is the one that has generated the most questions. And so I think it's important to And so I think it's important to kind of give you the topic, but also read the questions that came straight from the individuals in the audience to kind of give you that spectrum or range of issues that are top of mind for them. And so the question is, locally, there have been a number of conversations on the issue of mental health for our students. What role do you see the NCSD Board of Trustees playing in this topic? Should they be doing more to support students' mental health and well-being? And those who are in the audience, if you'll indulge me to just make sure that their interests and needs are covered. The questions range from how do you plan to support student mental health? Do you believe it's the board's responsibility to actively address the issues of teen violence, self-harm, and suicide? The school district is experiencing unprecedented levels of student violence, self-harm, and suicide. What should the board's responsibility be in responding to this? We'll start with candidate Redding. One minute.
A lot of questions to answer in one minute. Okay. The school board, I think, does have a place for mental health. It is a very important thing for our children. I completely agree. What I think needs to happen is the school board and the schools need to get their children where they need to be. So what I'm trying to say is, the teachers are great in this district, and they recognize when a child is struggling. They really do. And when that happens, I believe that the teacher should get that child to the correct place that they need to be. I think that the school district does do well in this, and I think we need to get the community more involved, because we have a lot of sources here in Casper that can help with that. And I think if, once we get the community involved, I think this could be a project that would work great for us. I think that the teachers know what they're doing, and I think the administration knows what they're doing when they're getting children the help that they need. And I think when we get the community involved in our sources, I think that's when we can help the children.
Hi, Albert Hall. I also agree with what Renee said about the community. After the, there were the two murders and everything, at the school board meetings, there was a string of people that came up from organizations in Casper, right here around, and offered their services. And we certainly should avail ourselves of those. As far as the school board, it certainly is, the school board should be a point of that to gather this information and be able to present it to the parents, be able to give them various sources that would be able to help them with the counseling or whatever it is that they need. And also, I didn't have the chance in that short version at the time. I also believe that the teachers are the first line of defense. They're right there. They know the kid, they know when something's off, when something has changed, and they certainly would be one of the people we would definitely want to talk to.
John Bolander. Yeah, there are some students that have some serious emotional problems, social-emotional problems, and some of them don't have the parental support that they need. So we have to support all students any way that we can. As just mentioned, one of the things that I know is that teachers are pretty well-aware of situations, or at least behaviors, that are troubling from the students. And one of the things that I want to make sure is that the relationships between a teacher and a student are so important, and so we've got to make sure that occurs. I think we have some great teachers, but there's counseling, there's support staff, and we have to address bullying. It is something that makes some kids feel unwelcome, and it is a situation that we have to address.
The board doesn't work on budget by itself. It's part of an interest-based agreement process. So the stakeholders are all involved, and it's usually a great process because the stakeholders bring forward issues that are of concern at the buildings, with teachers, with kids, et cetera. So when we had S R money, we knew we needed more nurses. Now that we don't have all the S R money, we have to cut back on the nurses again. So then you figure out other ways. We signed a contract so that kids are getting help from one of our local agencies, but I think we also could bring back some programs or develop some programs that we use to bolster kids, like the sale program back when we had big drug problems in the district. And there are other programs as well. So I would maybe look to bringing some of those back for help for our kids.
Alex Petrino. So the role of the board in addressing mental health needs of students, I think the role, the board does play a role, and the district plays a role, but nothing occurs in a vacuum, and we have to consider all of the components in the community, and the families, and our resources that help to address bullying, suicide prevention, and mental health. The other thing I will say with that is that the district did pass a new safety plan in September, and I do think we have to give that an opportunity to work and hear feedback from the stakeholders to see how that is working, and try to be patient with that. That being said, with any prevention program across the board, no prevention program is going to be 100% successful. And to make things more successful, we have to ensure we have proper education in all of our buildings in the district, proper training, proper buy-in, and proper implementation. So I think there is a role for the school board and the district in addressing these concerns. However, nothing occurs in a vacuum, and everybody in the community has to contribute.
Cheyenne Houston. As with most things, the earlier you can make a determination on a situation, the sooner that you can address it and hopefully, you know, be able to squelch any harm or to provide benefits for that. I believe that the school board has a role into ensuring that all staff members have the training that they need to be able to recognize a student that is in distress and to be able to quickly address that. But for advanced situations, they need to know what resources are available in the communities and make sure that the student and the parents get the help and assistance that they need to address the concerns for that student.
Kyla Alvey. And sometimes I think that this might just be a little bit of a breakdown. Like Alex had said, the district just implemented a new safety policy or safety guidelines. So we're going to really work that out and hope that that comes to fruition. There's a lot the district does, and they do really, really well. We actually just initiated a, in conjunction, have you heard of Jay's Foundation, where we all have cowboy boots now, and we're going to work with all the seniors and all the high schools for suicide prevention. And so there's just a lot that is already happening that can continue to happen, and I agree, it's a very important thing that our community comes out and helps these kids. I just have to say, on social media especially, when grown adults, I think, fight with each other and say not-so-nice things about each other, but we expect our kids to behave differently, there's really nothing that we can do if they're seeing this behavior out in their community and in their homes and with their friends and their parents' family. So that's one thing that I hope that we can all come to agreeance on, that we need to be a little bit better about how we treat others, even if it's not directly to their face.
Sarah Bieber. I, mental health is not necessarily the wheelhouse alone of education. Education is education's wheelhouse. And taking mental health as part of education doesn't always do justice to what is necessary and what is needed. Incorporating our resources in our community, bringing contracts, there was, programs were talked about, I think all of those things are vital for our education system. They play an important role in all of that. The board leading on that would be that we continue to keep the resources that we have and build on the programs that we have, and access. I think access is a big one. Parents don't know where to go always. Students don't know where to go. Sometimes the schools don't know who to reach out to. Making sure that access is available to all our schools and our students and our families.
Dana Howie. I think one of the most important things is to focus on the whole child, because kids, if they're not okay, are not going to be able to learn very well. So I'm very glad that we have counselors in our schools. I'm very glad our teachers build relationships with the kids. You're right, they are the ones that are the first line of defense, and I'm glad that we also have therapeutic counselors that we can access. We have a contract with those people as well. I am on a committee with, there are at least five of us from the district, that is, working with the Nitrone, I'm not going to get this right, Nitrone Collective, Nitrone Health Collective. I think that's right. Anyway, it is doing exactly what you're talking about, and gathering resources that parents can get to, that they can get their kids to, and making it available so that we know what is actually in the schools.
Elizabeth Mahoney. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I've worked in healthcare for well over 30 years. I've seen the worst outcome when children do not have the services that they need and they deserve. As a school board, we do have a responsibility. Children are coming through the doors with an unbearable load on their shoulders and the baggage that they carry, and there is absolutely no way we can adequately educate these students if we do not address their mental health. And so I do support mental health, and I think it's something that is only going to increase that need. So thank you.
Teja True Wells. I like to say that you can't educate a child if they're in stress. So the whole child is important. I'd like to point out that I think, I visualize two different areas of mental health. One is the social-emotional learning, showing kids how to identify when they're stressed, when they need to talk to somebody, and opening that door so they can self-advocate. It's hugely important. Second is the education of staff, whether that's teachers, psychologists, whoever, to understand how the structure of our services within Casper and Nitrone County can help families and students. And not only what the structure of that is, but also, how do you broach the subject for a kid who's in stress to a parent who may or may not be open to a kid that may be struggling? That touch, that Jay Foundation touch, checking in, super important. I love the fact that there are actual experts here on the table.
Thank you.
And listen to them.
This next question will be long-form, so one minute, and candidate Hall, this question is for you. What role should parents play in our schools? And I know that every teacher up here will complain about this. How do we encourage parents to become actually better involved in their students?
Hi, Albert Hall. The parents have a very important role, and they're the primary caregiver for their child, and they know what is best for the child, hopefully. As far as how to involve the parents, one of the things that I have formulated over the last several weeks, as I've been, especially more than that the past couple months, is about having open lines of communications, even having like parent advisory committees at the schools, be able to meet with the parents as a school board and ask them what it is that they need. The parents' role is also then, they have a responsibility to help the school, help the teachers to discipline the child. When the child is behind, and they're told your child is falling behind in academics or is misbehaving, then they need to help the teacher, they need to help us as the school board be able to enforce the plans that we have.
John Bolander. The role of parents is extremely important in the success of students. And one of the things that I would like to see, we had this at the school, I thought it was Learning Center, we had an expectation, no way to enforce it, but the expectation that all parents would volunteer for a certain period of time each month. So that got them involved, and it also made connections between the staff and the parents, and that's really important. We've got to work together, and the communication has to be there in order for parents to understand what's going on and for teachers to understand what's going on at the students' homes.
I think it's great when parents volunteer in their children's classroom, but I think their real role is sending their kids to us prepared to learn. That means making sure that they have a good place to study at night, and that they get to bed at a decent hour and aren't under the covers with their cell phones texting their friends, that they have a good breakfast before they come to school, and maybe not a fight with you on their way out the door. So I think that those are really important roles for a parent, to send their kids to us ready to learn.
Thank you. Alex Petrino. Parents and guardians should always be involved in their child's education, and I think part of that is really making sure we're partnering with schools as a parent, asking questions, being involved, partnering with the teacher, also trusting the teachers as well. I think we also have to understand that there are some parents and guardians that aren't going to be able to be in attendance at school, to show up to PTO meetings and to do some of those things. And I think we have to sometimes be creative in how we get those parents and guardians involved. And I always encourage parents to hold curiosity with their child and ask questions and be interested in what they're talking about and interested in what they're learning, even if you don't have any interest in it. Be curious and see what they are up to, and also hold their own child accountable, and help the teachers and schools hold their children accountable as well.
Cheyenne Houston. The role of the parent is first and foremost, they are the guardian of that child or that student, and so that is their most important role. As with building any relationship, whether it's, you know, between neighbors, parents, teachers, friends, whatever, the most important way to do that, in my opinion, is through open communication and transparency. Both the parent and the schools should be open and honest with each other about what's going on, and the same way with the parents. You know, if the child is struggling, they need to relay that information to the teacher so that everybody is on the same page with that student. I just believe that the more that you communicate with one another and the more transparent of what's going on in the situation, the better the relationship will be.
Kyla Alvey. And I'll never forget when I heard this, public education is only successful with the support of parents and guardians in the home of a child. When that was said in one of our meetings, I thought that is truly 100% the case. When that child goes home at night and they have somebody who can help them through the processes of school, they are much more successful. With that, I feel like this question is for me. I'm a huge advocate of PTOs and PTAs. Like Alex had said, some parents just cannot make those. I think establishing a good relationship with your teacher is incredibly crucial, because then they'll feel comfortable reaching out to you and asking for things, like cutting things at home, or making copies when you can, or stapling papers that they need in your spare time. You don't always have to go in and be in the classroom, but there are so many ways that you can be involved. And again, for me, it's just about establishing that communication and that relationship with that teacher, so they're comfortable and confident to talk to you as a parent.
Sarah Bieber. I think it's important as elected officials to open that dialogue to parents, because PTOs aren't always possible. So what if we have informal meetings? What if we invite to town halls where the parents get to sit and talk? Those lines of communication are just as important as the formal ones at board meetings. I would definitely advocate for more open communication with parents and community members and taxpayers, allowing them to see kind of what they don't get to see on the everyday that they're not in the classroom. I think it's important that, we used to have a parent advisory committee for the school district. I think those are important. I think that would be something that if we could go back to something like that, that that could play an important role for our school district. I think that's all I have.
Dana Howie. The thing I always noticed is that if parents are involved, the kids are going to be fine. They are going to get good grades, they're going to be involved in activities, and you just know they're going to be fine. Unfortunately, there are not- Unfortunately, there are not, there are some parents that are not involved and it's really hard when you call a parent and they either don't pick up or maybe they are really irritated with you for calling. But I always just gave email address and cellphone number to my parents so that they could get ahold of me. And a lot of those parents did. And I made a point of answering them just as quickly as I could. I totally believe that the parent is the first educator and we need to work together in getting kids through school.
Elizabeth Mahoney. So parents and guardians are indeed partners in education of our students. But also, I think we have to realize and take into account how much society is changing and how quickly it's changing and the pressure that parents are often under, single households, homes where both parents work. And I think the district, although everything that's been mentioned are all very, very good things, but the district really needs to be nimble in terms of meeting parents where they're at to elicit involvement with their children's education. So it's challenging, but I think it's well worth the fight.
Awesome question. One of my mantras is parental rights, parental responsibilities. Parents need to, or I wouldn't even say obligated, to be involved, to be helpfully involved. They are critically important. They need to have their kids ready to learn. They do have rights to be involved in their kiddo's education. But they also have responsibilities. They have a responsibility not to make a teacher's job a lot harder. They have a responsibility, they have a responsibility to know that they cannot limit another child that is not their own, their education. Parents should also know that their responsibility to not assume things about other people's children. And they should not gossip or bully other people's children. Very important. Kids bully because adults bully. And parents have a right to be helpfully involved. Thank you.
I absolutely agree that parents are the first and foremost educators of our children. Parents absolutely need to be involved. And unfortunately, sometimes that's not possible for every single parent. But again, we do have a responsibility because they're our children. We put them in the public school education, so we should be the ones to step up and take care of our children. I think the school board should have a responsibility also to try and make everything transparent. So again, making sure that there's an open dialogue. Town halls, meetings, whatever we can, and making sure, possibly, should I get elected, making sure that I can ask questions to those parents or whomever has a question for me or I can answer it at the school board. Sometimes some people think it's not possible, but I absolutely do think it's possible. So parents are absolutely important to our education.
Okay. This next question is a short answer, or short form question from the audience. And it starts with candidate Bolander. What are your views regarding the Wyoming Legislature giving public money for private schools?
Okay, that's one of my principal issues. I mean, we have a real budget problem. We don't have enough money to do everything that we need to do, everything we've been talking about tonight. You know, do we have enough counselors? Do we have enough, you know, training? Do we have, there's so many things that we need. And if public money, tax money, going to private charter schools is a real problem. It takes money away from public schools.
Thank you. I know, it's not exactly short form. Just do the best you can.
I don't think that the Legislature should be using public money for charter schools, nor do I think that they should be the ones deciding when we have a charter school in district or not. I believe strongly in local control and I'll leave it at that.
I don't believe the Legislature should be using public money for private schools, charter schools, or schools with a religious affiliation.
Cheyenne Houston. I believe in an all-of-the-above approach to education. Our kids deserve the best education they can get. That public money was paid for by their parents and that money should be able to follow that student to the school that's going to best give them the education their parents think they deserve.
Kyla Alvey. I also do not agree with public funds going to private entities.
Sarah Bieber. I support, one hundred percent support, money following the children. Parents have a right to decide the education of their child, whether that is in a brick-and-mortar school, an online school, a charter school, a homeschool, whatever that environment looks like that fits that family and that kiddo.
Dana Howey. I think we need to follow the US Constitution and keep public money for public schools. There are some cases where we have looked at charter schools before and if they offered something new, then we would consider them. But in general, we need to follow the Wyoming Constitution.
Elizabeth Mahoney. And I believe strongly, public funds need to remain with public schools.
Thea Truwells. Two precursors. Public schools take everyone. Private schools and charter schools can, in reality, choose their students. Public funds go to public schools.
Renee Redding. I absolutely believe in the money following a child. Side note, charter schools are public schools. They just don't have to follow the curriculum. They still have to follow state standards. So I absolutely do believe in money following the child. If our public schools have nothing to worry about, then there should be all sorts of choices for our children.
I also believe the tax money we're talking about came from the parents. The parents should be able to take that money. And parental rights, they should be able to have their child educated in the way that they choose. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, tax money does come from...
Did you answer this question?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's been a long night. I got confused as well. Sorry about that. Okay. This next question is a long form, so a minute. And it's for candidate McCullar. What is your philosophy of the role of public education in society?
Is to educate our children. I believe that we have a responsibility to prepare them for their lives by making them literate, giving them skills, content, curriculum, so that they're able to go out and function in the world.
Alex Petrino. I believe that public education is the foundation of our community. I believe public education allows us to address the whole child in making sure that not only are they academically successful when they hopefully graduate, but they are able to have compassion, empathy, critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, so that whatever they choose to do after they are out of school, they are ready to do that, they are prepared, they are an engaged citizen, and they are a good employee.
Cheyenne Houston. And I believe that the number-one responsibility of the public school system or any school in general is to provide the student with the knowledge and the skills that are necessary to be successful once they graduate, whether that's going on to a technical school or a four-year college or just directly entering the workforce. So, yes, that's, the responsibility is to prepare our students for the next adventure.
Kyla Alvey. I think public education is kind of like the backbone to a society and a community. We take these kids in and prepare them, as has been said, for going out into the real world and doing things that they need to do. There are absolutely things that public education must do, like teach them their curriculum and the standards and the things that they have to know. And then there are those accidental things that they get where they are socialized and they get to be with kids of all different collective political backgrounds and, you know, tax brackets. And they get to do sports and theater and grow them into wonderful humans that we, you know, can go back out into society and be contributing members.
I think public education and education in general is learning how to learn because you don't stop learning. You never stop learning. Even as an adult, you still learn. And so, learning from a young age, how to learn and how to continue to learn and those foundational skills of reading and writing that are very important. I think that's what public education, that's what education should do so that no matter where that child goes in their life, they have that foundation of learning to build from and to move from.
Dana Howey. My philosophy of the role of public education, that it is intended for every child to have the free opportunity to become a responsible and productive citizen. And some of them have different learning styles. And so, it's important that public education support the differences among the kids so that they can have every opportunity they can. Maybe not equal, but equitable is what I would say because some students need more help than others. But we want all citizens to, or all children to become productive citizens.
All right, so I believe, this is Elizabeth Mahoney. I believe the role of public education in society, it is a cornerstone in our society today and it will be tomorrow. I think the difficult part is none of us in this room know what tomorrow is going to look like. It is changing quickly. And the role is to prepare these students to be able to adapt to a future that we have no idea what it will look like and to ensure that they can be a successful, contributing member to society in the future.
Thea Truwells. Public education, I believe, serves two different and distinct areas of our community. One, is to prepare our students with the academic and skills to work and survive in a world that we don't know what it's going to look like. So we have to be flexible and we have to prepare them to learn. The second is it is the foundation of our community. If you in your head can tell me what the oil bowl is, that is public school community. Can you tell me what the peach bowl is? If you can, that is building community. That is important. That brings us together. We can cheer, we can cry, we can have orange and black or, you know, green and yellow. All of that, that makes community.
I think public education is extremely important in our community. You know, we're all trying to raise our children the best that we can and we send our children to public schools to learn foundations like reading and math and science. So, public education is never going to go away. And I think that we need to make sure that we all do our best to continue to do what we can to make public education the best. You know, Natrona County does have some great teachers. I have had my children in school for the last, well, my oldest is a junior. So I think public education is great. And I also believe that as a community, we can make it great also. So, public education builds our foundations for our children and we need to remember that.
Albert Hall. I believe absolutely that the easy ones, it's for academics, it's teaching the kids how to think, it's teaching the kids how to behave, how to interact in groups and everything. But the thing that I think about is that this changing world, it's been spoken about many times, is to be able to teach them to think for themselves, to be able to problem-solve, be able to tell the truth from a lie, which is very difficult even as adults. And to be able, then they'll be able to go out and be responsible citizens. They'll be able to go out and they'll be able to vote their conscience and vote rightly and be able to see through the things that are being shoved at us every day. So, yes, public education has a place. I've been out of school for a little while and I do remember teachers. I do remember teachers that taught me that. And sometimes they had to teach me the hard way. But sometimes we learn the best things the hard way. So public education is extremely important in having a civil and productive society.
John Bolander. It is the responsibility of public education to do what they can to develop responsible citizens and prepare the students for future success and their endeavors. I do think that sometimes we tend to overlook some important aspects of education, such as civics, which a lot of people, you know, a lot of us need to know more about, and critical thinking. Critical thinking is one of the things that allows a student or a person to determine whatever, you know, it could be this way, it could be that way, depending on how you look at it from a perspective. And critical thinking is one of those things that allows people to make the right decisions.
Okay. We're going to do another long form and we're going to start with candidate Petrino. And this is from the audience. What recent board decisions would you celebrate? And which ones do you question and why?
Oh man, regretting being first. I appreciated the, passing of the budget was one, especially being at that meeting and reading through the budget myself. I was appreciative of that. I've appreciated that the board did not have to lay off any teachers and that they've been able to right-size, you know, enrollment challenges and budget. And it's no small feat to pass the budget, so I was impressed by that. I'm always impressed by our board being able to celebrate teachers in the district and point out successes and not just with our teachers, but with our bus drivers, with our custodial staff and with other individuals. Things I question, I'm not sure there's been anything recently that I've questioned. As I said previously, I am curious to see how the new safety plan unfolds. I am curious to see how the new suicide prevention plan unfolds. That is something that's near and dear to my heart and I have some ideas for that going forward. So that's one more that I question more than anything and I'm curious to see how it works.
Cheyenne Houston. One thing that I've noticed in the school board's meetings is that they do welcome public input. Now, I think that if it was more interactive, people could learn a lot better. And I always think it's important to celebrate the successes within the school district. Some of the concerns I have is where the money is being spent. The most recent one was the, it's just a proposal to start looking at the Kelly Walsh soccer facility. But there's other schools out there that are begging for money and they just, they feel like that they're ignored. And so, the way that they're spending their money, I'd like to see it more evenly dispersed.
Kyla Alvey. Gosh, you guys, I sit on the board and I go to all these meetings and I'm sitting here drawing a blank. What have we done so great? What am I doing with my life? Just kidding. We have done some great things. I like to follow what Alex said with the budget. That is a huge labor of love. That actually starts like the day after it's approved, the brand-new budget comes out the next. And that is a lot of hard work on our CFO, Matt Flett, and all the people at the district who work tirelessly to, you know, figure all that out. We are partnering, like again, with J's Foundation, which is suicide prevention, that we are doing boots-on-the-ground. Mental health services, we're working tirelessly on making sure that kids are taken care of, safety is prioritized. And, I don't know, everything seems really great, but we've been doing some good things.
I always appreciate the teacher and the student recognitions that they do at the board meetings. Those are always really great. They have the FFA kiddos and the 4-H kids come and all of the groups and the clubs and the sports that get recognition and make certain championships, when schools win awards. Teacher of the Year awards that came recently, those were really big ones. There was a, I can't think of what the most recent teacher was. I think it was the history teacher, the history teacher. Those are always great. I love those celebrations. That's really fun. One of the big things that I question is the parental rights policy. question is the parental rights policy, um, forty-ten that the district passed. The reason that I question that policy is because it wasn't written by our board. It wasn't written for our district. It was a blanket policy that was written by the Wyoming School Board Association. It was adopted by the school board. And I think that that could be better and it could do a lot more work for our school district and be a lot more defined.
Dana Howie. I've got to tell you that I, um, I love our school system and all the things it has to offer and there are always things to celebrate, which I'm so glad Chair Christopherson decided to do this year. Um, we try to have a celebration at almost every single meeting. One of the things I appreciated most recently though, was that we had a report, um, on safety, on bullying, um, on, um, mental health that took quite a while in academic steering. And Assistant Superintendent Rose, um, did a lot of research and laid it all out and that their intent was to go, uh, we have several new, um, administrators this year and they did the PD themselves, the superintendents did, to see if we can make sure that all of our, um, schools are on the right page as far as dealing with some of the problems that we have. So I'm really anxious to see how that's gonna happen and I can't wait to get back out in the schools and observe.
Right, Elizabeth Mahoney. As I was preparing to, to make the decision whether or not to run for the, the school board, I did a couple of things. I, I looked at the academic performance of our students and also the school, um, performance. And it pretty clearly there needs to focus on that. When I reviewed the strategic plan of the district, in particular the goals, I think those are worthy of celebration. I think they, um, recognize the, the need for academic success and school improvement and, um, and I am excited about that. It, it's tough to own sometimes, but, um, I think this district has done a heck of a job wrapping their arms around it and moving forward.
Tia Tru Wells. So a positive and a, um, a negative about the Board of Trustees. I'm gonna go back a few years. Um, so I was involved with bringing dual-language immersion, um, to Nitrana County schools. And through that process, I thought, saw thoughtful discussion. I saw hard questions being asked. I saw some people trying to avoid the work. Uh, but at the end, we had two programs implemented in our district that are world-class opportunities. That is amazing. It's parents who wanted something desperately for their kids and they made it happen and the board walked alongside them. It was awesome. Second, things that I've been a little bit disappointed with, um, I do think the board's sometimes members, um, can go on tangents that feel like they're just slowing things down and gumming up the system. That's frustrating. When, when board members question anonymous donors, it's insulting. And I think we need to be gracious to our community that donates.
Uh, okay, something that I think the school board does well is recognize our teachers. We all know that we have really great teachers in the school district. I think that teachers deserve most of all the, actually if not all of the recognition for dealing with our children day in and day out. Just like, uh, by the way, Renee Redding, I keep on forgetting to do that. Uh, anyways, just like Sarah, um, because I am such a strong parental rights advocate, um, I do think that that parental rights policy does need to be revisited and strengthened a little bit. I think that is one thing that I would, um, kind of look at, that I would question for the school board.
Hi, Albert Hall. Um, I also, uh, one of the things I thought it was when they do the recognitions, but I, what I thought about, there was a couple of times when it wasn't just the, uh, recognizing the football team and recognizing the champion, champion baseball team or whatever. They, uh, they, they, um, gave, gave kudos to, to some of the programs we ran. No, they did one that was robot, the robotic team. We acknowledged the robotic team and they had another one, uh, when they, they brought forward the, uh, the kids who had graduated from the, uh, the welding program. And, uh, that was really cool. And, uh, the things I question, uh, one of the things that is, uh, the, the budget also, but that it's, uh, just line items. I'd like to see a audited, itemized budget of where the money was actually being spent instead of just, uh, line i, line items of, you know, a name and forty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, also, uh, more of a focus at first on right now with the situation, whether it needs versus wants.
Yeah, John Bolander. I also appreciate, uh, the recognition of the Board of Student Accomplishments and Teachers Accomplishments. And so that's always fun and enlightening and there are, there are a number of, uh, of activities that are praised and that's important. Speaking of activities, it's important also that the board has supported extracurricular activities. Uh, yes, it, it costs money, but it's so important for the development of the whole child. I do have concerns about, uh, this is like just surfaced in the last couple of years about a lack of collaboration uh, by, by a few of the board members. And it's important that we are able to work together. We can't, you know, just be divisive. We have to work together and find, uh, common ground.
I celebrate the Nitrana County website because it is the first introduction, I think, for people when they're trying to find information about school and it's beautifully done, it's comprehensive, and I think it should be celebrated widely. I do have a concern and it is about the parental rights bill that came out of the legislature. And if you haven't read it, I invite you to because I think it, if it doesn't instill fear in teachers, it should. Um, it's, it goes a long way towards, um, creating animosity between parents and teachers when it comes to kids. The school board only got involved as an afterthought with people. And one of my problems is that we have members that refuse to attend school board meetings when the nationals, when the school board in this state is the largest constituency that is elected. But instead, we have members that go to the legislative meetings. So.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Um, this next question is gonna be for candidate Houston. Um, it's a short question, not, you can answer it more than one, um, one sentence, but a thirty-second question. Uh, thoughts on providing no-cost breakfast and lunch to students in the district?
Cheyenne Houston. A good breakfast is the foundation to learning. I think it's essential that, um, these kids start off with a good breakfast. For some of these kids, that is the, oh, the first meal that they receive when they get to school. Um, so my only concern would be with it is, is that are we feeding the kids stuff that they wanna eat and that it, there's not a lot of waste with it? But a, a good breakfast is essential to learning.
I would absolutely love if there was a way that we could do no-cost breakfast and lunch for students in the district. All the money in the district is taxpayer money, so it's somebody's money. So it isn't no cost, it's just, uh, shifting the cost. So, um, it was mentioned wants versus needs. I think it is a need that we have no-cost breakfast and lunch. I think it is a need over a want. And I think that that's something we should be providing to our students.
Dana Howie. I totally agree. There are way too many kids out there that don't have enough to eat, um, even on the weekends. So the more we can provide for them at no cost, the better.
Elizabeth Mahoney. No-cost breakfast, no-cost lunch is a no-brainer in my mind. Um, it's a basic need of students and if we can't, if we can't get beyond the basic needs, there are no, there's absolutely no way we will be able to educate them.
I love it. To feed our kids and to give them nutritious meals so that they can learn is one of the most humane things we can do as a society.
Um, I also support it. Again, um, I think there's a lot of waste in the district. Unfortunately, our food in our lunch, uh, program is not the greatest, but I think that we can work with that and, uh, see what we can do to bring better food to our school district. But I also am supportive. I think it is a need. Um, and, um, I think the school board should work as hard as they can to bring nutritious, better food to our children.
We're heading towards unanimous. Albert Hall. Um, I also do, I think it would be inconsistent for us to, to, to put these, these, uh, things that we want the kids to do, achieve academically and behave properly and everything, and not to do something that probably in the scheme of things is a small cost. So I completely, uh, completely support it. And, uh, they might have to think something the kids actually want to eat, but I'm not sure that's what's happening, but it's just a thought.
Yeah, okay. Closer to unanimous, um, I totally agree. Hungry kids can't learn and we have, so, you know, it's just one of those things where, um, it needs to be done. It's a no-brainer. Let's do it.
I also believe that we should have breakfast for kids, um, especially if they don't have breakfast at home. Uh, and it would be nice if it was no cost. Same thing with lunch.
After the first day of school this year, my class at kindergarten came home and he said, "Mom, the chefs at my school make the most delicious food." He just thought that was the most amazing thing. And so, kudos to Southridge. Um, but yes, I believe we should try to prioritize free breakfast and lunch. I also appreciate the backpack program that the school has.
Okay, candidate Alvy. So what we have is the last short-form question. And then, once that all goes through, um, we'll give the candidates each a minute to conclude. We understand that, that we haven't been able to get to all of the questions. We are so grateful that you have submitted these questions. I'm pretty sure that the candidates will make themselves available when we're all done to really ask what's top of mind for you. Um, but so far, we've just had a really robust conversation and, um, it's been respectful and lovely and I'm super excited so far. So let's end on a really high note. So again, one short-form question. Now, candidate Alvy, it's going to be five words or less. Um, and then, whatever you don't get to, you can always put in your concluding statement. Um, so, what is the best thing about NCSD?
Everything. I love the teachers and the district staff.
Students are number one. I, students, families, then teachers. Is it shut off? You can start again. Students, families, teachers. Is that better? Sarah Bieber.
Everything.
Elizabeth Mahoney. I'd say the students and our staff.
Tia Tru Wells. Opportunities. They meet kids where they're at and get them to the next level.
Renee Redding. Um, our CTE programs at the PIC, I think the PIC does a really wonderful job. Um, my daughter went there and she loved it. So, I would say that.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, she set the standard. Albert Hall. Um, I, I got to meet, I got to work with some of the, uh, the district staff principals and stuff through the Love Your City thing and saw them outside of their usual thing and it was wonderful.
Uh, John Bolander, and I just have to, uh, agree with that, uh, students are the best thing, but, uh, our staff, our teachers, our administration, uh, we all work so hard together.
Okay, thank you, candidate Bolander.
I think the best thing is the variety of opportunities that we give our kids in this district.
Students, teachers, staff and administration.
I'd say students, parents, ruralness and diversity.
Thank you. Can we pass it back to candidate McCullar? I just wanna make sure that everybody who.
You expect me to remember what I said?
You can say whatever you want because I don't think the microphone really caught it. So, whatever you'd like to say now.
So I think that the most important thing that we have to offer are opportunities, varied, broad opportunities for our kids.
Thank you. Um, and we planned this exactly right because the last, last up is, uh, candidate Bieber. Um, we will give you a minute to make any concluding statements. Um, we just wanna thank everyone again for attending. Uh, thank the candidates. This was a fantastic discussion. Um, and thank the audience. Um, this will also be available, um, on the, on the library's YouTube. Um, and so, we just wanna thank you all here. So again, a minute to candidate Bieber, uh, concluding statements. I wanna thank Sarah Bieber, everybody for coming out tonight. I know it's not exactly the, the highlight of a Thursday evening, but thank you for coming, thank you for hosting. Um, again, I'm running for Sarah Board. Uh, we'll, we'll let you start again if we can get that one to come down here. I, I think it's cutting out, so we'll just go ahead. Um, we'll swap that out and then we'll go ahead as soon as, um, Betsy conclude, gets our timing started again, we'll go ahead and start your minute. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah Bieber. Um, thanks for coming, everybody. I, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Um, again, I have been working really hard. I've served on multiple other boards I've been appointed to. I have stewardship. The experience that I've gained from those things just create a really good understanding of, of boards and policies and those different things. I'm confident in my ability to, um, represent the community and the parents and the students. I have eleven years of experience as a registered nurse, active. I'm a mother. I love this state. I love this district. I love this town. My children are here. My family is here. Um, thank you all for coming tonight.
Dana Howie. I would also like to thank our hosts for, uh, for having us tonight. Um, I just, I just have to say that, um, being an educator is kind of a, it's more of a lifestyle almost than it is just a career. And I think that's why I wanted to get back in and get on the board after I was done teaching because I enjoyed all of my teaching, um, and learning the whole time. And boy, when I first got on the board, was it a learning experience. And I've been on there for twelve years and now there are things I've forgotten. So, then I need to get back and get to that. But one of the hardest things for me to learn was the budget and I think I finally got most of that figured out beyond that. Um, I need to tell you that our compact issues committee and the way we decide things is fantastic. One of the best, um, around and we, we keep hearing that. Um, thank you.
Elizabeth Mahoney. And what I, I've noticed, uh, as I made the decision to, to step into this race was, um, there seemed to be somewhat of a polarization and I think that, uh, I've seen it pull the focus away from the academic performance of, of the students and, and what we're capable of. I think being in Wyoming is a gift. It's a, it's a blessing. Education in Wyoming is, um, some of the top in the country. And then we break it down to Nitrana County and we have a lot of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. Thank you for being there, both the library and the League of Women Voters. Um, in closing, we have agreed, district. I would ask Nitrana County voters to do us one favor though. Listen to our words, but believe our actions. Believe what we have done in the past. A lot of people will just complain. They like to do that. But improvement takes hard work. It takes time, it takes vision, it takes consistency and people who understand how to get things done. I would ask not only for your vote, but for the vote on, for the four other people running as a slate. Dana Howie, John Bolander, Alex Petrino and Kyla Alvy. We know how to improve the district. We know how to get things done. Thank you.
Renee Redding. Uh, again, thank you all for coming on a Thursday night. Um, I absolutely believe in public education. My children are going to hear, going to school here and we love it. I do think that, um, oftentimes other people talk about civility and sometimes that goes both ways. I think we all do need to work together. I think we all do need to work together. I think that we all have our students and our community at best interest at heart, but it does take multiple opinions and multiple people to help that come to fruition. And I think that myself, Renee Redding, Albert Hall, Cheyenne Houston, Sarah Bieber, we can bring change to the school board that is desperately needed. So I pray and ask that you vote for us. Thank you.
Hello, Albert Hall, one last time. Boy, I just went blank. No, what I was thinking about is that, you know, as I said at the beginning, I did not plan on doing this. This was not in my plans three months ago, but I am committed to it. And one thing I can tell you is that win or lose, I will continue to help to look to improve Natrona County School District and the community of Casper. We could have said, as she said, I could sit on the sidelines and complain and moan and groan, or I can try to be part of this solution. And one of the things I did want to bring up, I mentioned earlier, with that one minute it wasn't there, with, we have two kids that we adopted, and with my work at CASA and the Sunrise Center, I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, but one of the things I thought of is my interactions with the parents of those kids who often didn't know how to do the right thing. They wanted to.
John Bolender. My three top priorities would be to do whatever we can to make all students feel welcome, be safe, and be motivated to learn. If students do not feel welcome, they will choose their desire to, they will lose their desire to learn and may even drop out. If students do not feel safe, they may not be able to focus on their learning, and they may even be hesitant to attempt school. School safety has become a growing concern for students, teachers, and most passionately, parents. Motivation is the key to learning. When students are motivated, they feel a desire to move forward in their learning and expand their educational possibilities. So it is by desire to make sure that every student receives a quality education with a safe, supportive environment.
I'm just drawing a blank right away. I listened to everybody else, and then I forgot the question. Would you repeat it for me?
You have one minute for concluding comments.
Oh, this is my concluding comment. All right, well, I want you to know that if you've driven around town, you've seen my lonely sign sitting by itself. That is because I am not a member of a slate, I'm not running on a slate, nor am I being supported by PAC funds. I believe that when you are a leader, it means taking a step out in front, and that's what I'm doing. I believe that we need to tighten our belts a little bit for our kids in terms of our expectations. We need to raise them, we need to get back to real learning taking place in the classroom. My goals are to ban cell phones, to have a discussion about school uniforms, because that's another big distractor. You can see that our kids don't really know how to dress when they go to school. And thirdly is to look at the CTE program, because that's what keeps our kids in town.
Thank you.
Alex Petrino. While my background might not be in K-12 formal education, I do believe I have ability to see development across the lifespan, and my expertise in mental health would be an asset to the district. As a leader on a variety of other boards and committees across town, I do know that governance takes all kinds of people and personalities to work. My leadership style is collaborative. I enjoy learning from others. I enjoy problem-solving and being creative and really working to figure out what is going to be best for our students in the district. My leadership style is also big picture and seeing what the long-term impact of policies and curriculum on the students and the community is going to be. So I want to thank you all for being here this evening and supporting public education, and I hope you'll vote for me.
Cheyenne Houston. I believe that my military experience and business background will be an asset to the district. My military experience has taught me to be a team player. It has taught me how to make tough choices. I have a proven track record of being a leader and a team player. I've had to deal with budgets. I've had to, I also have great experience in dealing with how or acknowledging how bureaucracies work and how they don't work, and I think that'll be an asset to help maneuver some of those mazes. My business background will be an asset because I believe that I can help create a public school system that is such a great product that our kids will not want to leave.
Kyla Alvy. And in like-minded fashion, I got nervous in the beginning and totally skipped over telling you anything about myself. My husband and I will celebrate our 15th wedding anniversary at the end of this month, and I have three small children, a fifth grader, a fourth grader, and a first grader that all attend our school and our community, our neighborhood, bar none, and they absolutely love it. I love public education. I, it's not a perfect system, it was never a perfect system, but you need people who are going to listen and who want to learn and to work together. I'd just like to end with a funny story also. My youngest, who's six, he calls buses weiner buses because they look like hot dogs.
Thank you, candidates. And again, the library is also hosting a forum on Monday, and this is for the senior district candidates, and that is at 7:00 PM on Monday. Hope to see you all there. Thank you again. Thank you so much.